It is April 21st, it's 2020, and I would like to call to order the 6:00 PM board meeting for April of the Lexington One School District. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for 2021 and a property contractual matter related to bus transportation facility? Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. We are now in executive session, so give us just a second to shut the doors and turn off the speakers and give us just about two or three minutes. We would like to welcome you to the April 21st, 2020 board meeting. I apologize for the late delay. We were having just a little bit of some technical issues, but I feel like we're on and out. We want to thank everybody who's joining us remotely, and we hope all of you are well. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank our teachers, our custodians, our bus drivers, our staff, and our administrators for all the work they have done since March 16th and in the education of our children. We just really, really appreciate you, and we know that you're working hard. At this time, I'd like to... Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session and begin open session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries and it is unanimous. I would like to call to order the general session again for the April 21st, 2020 board meeting. We are meeting tonight in compliance with the Governor's orders and the CDC recommendations. The Board will allow no more than 10 people in auditorium at any one time. The auditorium has been thoroughly cleaned and sanitized before the meeting, and will be after the meeting as well. Any Board member attending in person will take part in social distancing by maintaining a safe social distance from any other Board member. All Board members, employees, or other individuals attending the meeting or in person are advised to wear a face mask covering their faces at all times. Due to the Governor's restriction on public gatherings related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to watch this meeting on a YouTube channel. After the meeting, the district will follow a previously established process by posting a video of the meeting to the district's YouTube channel, Lexington One Video Site, and our own website. Individuals coming to the meeting are advised to wear a mask at all times. They will be located down in the staff development room, what we call the overflow room, where they will observe social distancing guidelines. If they have come to speak to us, they will also wait there until it's their turn to talk. The district has placed a lectern at the back of the auditorium for the speakers. A district employee will sanitize the microphone after each speaker. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting. The district also takes the meeting for accuracy and preparing the minute. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Brent Powers, who will lead us in our invitation and our pledge of allegiance.
So let us pray. Our gracious Father, Lord, as we're experiencing a time in our lives like no other, we know we need to trust you and not be afraid. Even though we're experiencing fear and anxiety, we still have control. Please use this time to remind us what we should be focused on. Create space in our students, our staff, and our community hearts to accept your peace that surpasses all understanding. Help us remember to trust you and not be afraid. You are our strength. God is in each decision we make for the benefit of this community. And we pray, Lord, for comfort and calm as only you can give. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we're now at 5.0 on our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Board members, we're now to 6... Board members, we're now to 6.0, which is approval of the minutes of the March 3rd and the March 17th, 2020 board meeting. You have provided copies of the minutes for the March 3rd, 2020, and the March 17th, 2020 regular board meeting. Other than the corrections already provided and made, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of these meetings? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as received. Board, we're now going to 7.0, which is reports and action items from executive sessions. Do I hear a motion to approve 27 certified recommendations for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board accepts Dr. Little and Senior Leadership Team's recommendations for the 27 important recommendations for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. I now have a motion on the floor to approve the 25 certified recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve 2,147 returning certified employees for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board accepts Dr. Little and Senior Leadership Team's recommendations for 2,147 returning certified positions.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Before we move on, Dr. Little, would you like to explain what that is, just in case anyone's not familiar with that, that we do that every year? The returning position.
Mr. Stacy, are you there?
That's okay. I'll...
Well, no, it's okay. So every year, we... The Board approves the contracts of people that are coming back. That's why you're voting on that, that happens every year. Mr. Stacy, do you want to go into more depth there?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out how to unmute on this thing. Yeah, we have 2,147 employees. Every year before the May meeting, before the end of April, we have to make a recommendation to the Board to approve new continuing contracts for the next year. If we don't do that, then they're automatically approved, but we always bring those to you so that you can do that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy. We appreciate that, and we also are so excited to welcome back all those teachers for next fall, so that we are re-upping their contracts. We love all of them, and right now, we want everybody back, so we're excited about that. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Board members, are there any other comments or questions before we take our vote? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the 2,147 contracts, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve one administrative recommendation for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accepts Dr. Little and Senior Leadership Team's recommendations for one administrative position for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Great. Thank you. I now have a motion on the floor from Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. So, Dr. Little, we've got you some employees for the fall, so that's a wonderful thing. At this time, we will call on Jeff Salters for a report regarding a property contractual matter related to the bus transportation facility. Mr. Salters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, this evening, we discussed... I get back. I get back. This evening, we discussed the property we talked about previously with bus transportation. And so, I would just call your attention this evening.
Kyle and Jada, can you hear Jeff as he turns the speaker off on his laptop?
None. Okay, I'm going to try again. All right, here we go. Just wanted to bring your attention that the next step in the process for this property is ratifying a price. At the February 18th board meeting, you approved an option agreement, and the next step would be to ratify a price. We've had two independent appraisals done, one by a firm that the district hired and one that the district chose, and one by a firm that was chosen by the seller. The two appraisals came back. One was at $30,766, one $31,997. So both the appraisals were right at the asking price of $32,000. And so, just as information, we're recommending and we will bring for action at... The parcel that ends with tax number 015 is 2.61 acres approximately, so that's about And then the one that ends in 014 is 44.27 acres, and that would be $1,416,400. Just to remind everyone of what we're talking about. Facility study was recommended to consolidate the Lexington River Bluff and White Knoll transportation lots together. Currently, Lexington and River Bluff are housed on property that is leased by us from the State Department of Education in an area that is being repurposed as part of their renovations for care and drop-off and pickup stacking. And so, the location that we looked at is about 4.1 miles from White Knoll High School, about 6.9 miles from White Knoll High School. Strual area is preferred as our buses begin their routes. Like property, and ideally, we'd have multiple driveway accesses for employees and buses to have separate drives. This is just a shot of the current... Located sites are served off our road. There's Highway 6 and I-20, and so, this is just off of Two-Not Road, right there at the interstate. Actually backs up to the interstate. Closer end shot of the property here. The larger parcel is located here, and the smaller parcel, if you can see my mouse, it's kind of over here to the right. It's this smaller track right here. And then you can see there are three distinct access points to Two-Not Road. Topography of the site is favorable with the upper portion of the site having a good buildable surface there, and in the... Kind of towards the middle of the site, there is a small pond and drainage area which we would make use of for our stormwater runoff. And there's a shot of that, approximately two and a half acres of wetland area, or 5.3% of the site. And again, just another shot of the aerial view of that side. Of course, you follow Highway 6 straight on down to the White Knoll area, and you can get over to Lexington High School by going kind of what we call the back way over by Michelin and going down that way. And of course, you can either get on the interstate or go through kind of the frontage roads to get to the River Bluff High School. So really good access from all parcels. And again, tonight, this is just for your information to let you know that we have the appraisals back, the sellers agreed to the price, and we will be coming to you next board meeting for a motion and approval to agree on the price. Once that happens, then we would follow a due diligence process where we would involve, you know, doing stormwater management, SEDOT, soil borings, site surveys, other things related to that, with also the office of school facilities, to follow that process to make sure that the site is suitable for purchase and moving forward. And then at a later date, we would bring back a motion to close the property, should all of that due diligence be satisfied.
Board, are there any questions for Mr. Salters? I just wanted to let you know, I had the opportunity to go pass out some lunches and ride the routes on the buses, and the bus drivers are real excited about this, the ones that I spoke to. We're real pleased that you're kind of modernizing and providing them some training centers and just a better workspace, so they told me they were real excited about this. I thought that was positive. So that, Board, that was just for information, so unless we have any questions, Dr. Guy, and Ms. Garrett, any questions?
None.
Okay, great. Okay, Board, we'll keep moving. At this time, it's now citizens' participation. Do we have anyone? Do you want to check and just make sure? Okay, nobody. Okay, so we're going to skip 8.0, and we would like to let our constituents and our community members know that I know it's an odd time to be coming to a meeting, but all of us are available by telephone, by email, and believe it or not, we even accept regular snail mail, too. So if someone wants to contact any Board members or Dr. Little, please feel free to contact us in any of those ways. We welcome your feedback. I'm now going to go to 9.0, which is superintendent's report, and Dr. Little is going to get a report from you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Again, I appreciate everyone's patience as we're dealing with some new technology tonight. Our tests, I think, seemed to go really well this afternoon, and that sometimes happens. So thank you for your patience, and we will continue to improve this process if we need to come back and do more of this in the future. So really, what I wanted to do tonight was take a couple of minutes to discuss this evening how the district has responded to the COVID-19 virus over the last month, and just give you a status report. Really, the key element for our response has been without a doubt...
Really, the key element for our response has been without a doubt...
We're going to break it down in one word.
We're going to break it down in one word. It's all about teamwork. Teamwork has been absolutely essential for how we've directed those efforts, and probably there are no two better examples of how that teamwork has happened than with our instructional programs as well as our food service delivery model. From an instructional program perspective, we've really seen this tremendous collaboration among content coordinators, instructional coaches, school administrators, teachers, and IT. We have distributed two instructional packets up to this point for our K-5 students, and we are preparing a third in the event that the Governor closes us for the rest or for the remainder of the year. We have conducted professional development for our teachers to help facilitate that online instruction, because, again, we switched very quickly, and we knew we were going to need some extra professional development about how to make that transition and how to make that switch. And as the time has lengthened, as we went from a 12-day experience now to a 20-plus day experience to potentially a 40-day, you know, 40-plus day experience, as we have lengthened, we've really focused on the essentials of that content while at the same time understanding we are balancing academic and social and emotional needs as we move forward. I will tell you, this is incredibly difficult to present with a mask covering your face. If you don't mind for just a second, I'm away from everybody else. It might be a little easier for me to do it this way for just a moment. Our teachers are spending a lot of their time and their energy staying connected, and to be honest, I think that's as important as the content is at this point. I know as a dad, I've been really impressed with how our schools and how the teachers are communicating, are letting us know what's going on, and are connecting with our students. They're using FaceTime, they're using Zoom, they're using Google Hangouts, email, pre-recorded videos, and also snail mail. We've received packages from our teachers as well, but we're really seeing our teachers experiment with a number of solutions to make those connections. And then, of course, we've also launched district-wide professional development learning opportunities focused on that social, emotional learning, student growth and self-monitoring, as well as developing students' self-awareness and social awareness. So a lot of that is taking place, and that has taken a ton of teamwork, collaboration, and really a leap of faith to jump into some new delivery models and some new delivery methods. But I'm incredibly proud of our folks, how they stepped up to the plate. I really think this has been a defining moment for the leadership of the school level and the classroom level and our district level, and it has been absolutely awesome. So that's really been the focus of our instructional program over the last month and a couple of days. Another fantastic example has to be the teamwork taking place with our food services and transportation. Right now, we are serving meals at seven drive-thru locations. Those are Red Bank Elementary, White Knoll Elementary, AES, Carolina Springs, GPS, Oak Grove, and Forest Pond. We have approximately 24 buses, and they're making over 100 stops each day, and as of last Friday, we have served 134,473 meals, to be precise. And if you include the number of people in transportation and food services, along with a large number of volunteers that have jumped in as well, you know, that has been really something spectacular. I know there are a number of our school board members have also volunteered on those bus routes a number of times, and also our senior leadership team. A number of our senior leadership team members have jumped on board, no pun intended, and have been a part of those routes and the grab-and-go as well. Right, we started out serving five meals a day, and really, that was our preferred delivery model, but I think what we've decided is that as we move to a two-day-a-week schedule to help reduce the exposure for our employees, and also, we've changed some of our process, we're including masks. Our nurses will be helping to take some temperature, those kinds of things, so we're adding some extra layers of safety for our employees while they're there, and I believe that starts this week, and so we're excited to see that kick off as well. Really, what we're trying to do is minimize exposure to our employees while also maximizing the impact that we're having in our community. This has been a significant undertaking and may continue to be for the foreseeable future. It is unclear at this point when the end of this program will take place, whether or not we will be asked to carry it on throughout the summer, or if we're stopping where we normally stop, and then our regular summer feeding program kicks in. It's really unclear at the moment when those things will begin to happen. So as we get more information about that, we will certainly let you know. You know, thinking about tonight, so much about tonight is unusual. It was the first time we've done something. Our human resources, they've really had to rethink how to do business as well. We've had a number of... Our first virtual principal search took place. We're in the middle of our second virtual principal search, and we're actually tomorrow holding our first virtual job fair. We have 35 participants in our first virtual job fair, and all our benefits meetings and everything associated with onboarding and retirement meetings and all that have also switched to a virtual location. And so, really, an overall change in how human resources is having to do business, and that's even more difficult for them because the whole point of human resources is personal contact and doing that. So they've had to rethink how they are going about doing that. I would tell you, one of our great challenges certainly has been to communicate with our public. Our communication department has been working incredibly hard, especially because the changes seem to be happening almost, you know, early on, especially over those first two weeks. Changes were really happening, what it felt like almost hourly, that there would be a plan come up, and then there'd be a new plan, and then there'd be another plan, and then there'd be a new plan. So our communications group has really done a fantastic job. There's been a number of letters from my office as the superintendent, as well as short videos, social media postings. We're really trying to keep our public in line and... Well, not in line, but communicated with at every step of that line, right? So every time there's a new, you know, directive, or, you know, now school's going to be closed on April 30th, or whatever it may be, we really want to make sure people are aligned to that information. And then, now, there are still major issues on the horizon, and we'll talk more about that in a second, but we're going to continue to be working at communicating. Our big communication focus at the moment is mental wellness. We've now been in this thing about a month. As we've worked with some professionals, they describe this as a psychological wave, and this psychological wave is going to hit, and we need to make sure we're taking care of the mental wellness of our parents, of our students, of our teachers across the board, everybody, all of our staff, about what that looks like. And so, that's really the focus of our last letter, and will be the focus of our next video, is about a real concentration on people's mental wellness. Now, it's unclear... I will tell you this, it is unclear whether or not we will be closed for the remainder of the year, but it does look like that's becoming a greater and greater possibility. We should know this week. I believe that is the intention, that we should know this week whether or not we will be closed for the remainder of the year, but it doesn't appear that that's...
Dr. Little, just explain that that is not our decision.
Correct. So that's not our decision. That's a Governor's decision, so in, you know, with Molly Spearman and her work there, I mean, I will tell you, our great challenge is, you know, our greatest challenge with this is that it's very difficult to do school while social distancing. I mean, I took my mask off just a few moments ago so I could provide this update, but I'm also well-spaced from the next, you know, closest person, and so, you know, we're washing our hands and we're doing lots of cleaning, but when it comes to a school, you put 60 kids on a school bus, or you change classes, or 400 kids in a cafeteria, or whatever that looks like, you know, it's incredibly difficult for us. So it does look like it's becoming a greater possibility that we will be closed for the remainder of the year, but at the moment, we don't know that. So assuming we will be out for the rest of the year, we will need... We will be creating a process, and our next big thing will be creating a process on how we're going to close out the year. This includes end-of-year pickup, device drop-off, students picking up their belongings that maybe have been left over in March, library books, I mean, you name it, you know, whatever it may be. There's a ton of examples, sports uniforms, band instruments, art supplies, whatever it could be. There's lots of things, but we do have a group working on this already, and we are exploring various options. We're really trying to focus on our contingency plans and trying to make sure we're always a step ahead, albeit... our contingency plans and trying to make sure we're all always a step ahead, uh, albeit technology for the board meeting as a, as an exception, but, but certainly in, in everywhere else, we're trying to make sure that we're a step ahead and trying to, um, anticipate things that are coming down so that we're not caught, uh, behind. And then, of course, um, I know the other hot topics are graduation and senior celebrations. Uh, we have a group working, uh, on that right now about how to best celebrate our seniors. Listen, we know this has been a tough time for them. If, if you're a senior, I know, um, we have two board members here that have seniors, uh, Dr. Powers and Ann Marie Green. I don't know if anybody else does. I just know it, and Ms. Garris, you, I believe you also have a senior. Um, you know, it's tough. It, it, it's a tough, it's a tough deal right now. And I know it's tough for a junior at my house. I know she's, you know, it's a tough time for her, too, but, um, we're going to really work to celebrate our kids. We're going to really work to celebrate their accomplishments, and it's going to look differently, and it may be, it may be unique than other ways we've ever done that before, but we are going to do something to celebrate them. And some of those ideas are already taking shape, and, and they are pretty exciting, but, uh, we'll continue to work through that and work with the governor's office about what we can accomplish and what we can do, uh, in terms of that regard. So, that's the, um, you know, that's really where there's so much still unknown about what we can and cannot do. So, I do want to think about that, that senior celebration and graduation, we're looking at as separate things at the moment. So, there will be a, a group of things that we will be doing to celebrate our seniors, and then we're looking for, uh, graduation-specific, um, solutions. And so, um, we should have some good ideas in the next seven to ten days. I think we'll have some, um, real specific and concrete things to, to share. I really also, as I'm, as I'm sitting here and thinking about, uh, the work that we're doing, I want to give a huge shout-out to Representative Chris Wooton. Um, he helped raise five thousand dollars, and with that money, they bought gift cards from local restaurants, and then they've taken those gift cards and they're partnering with our social workers, and our social workers will be distributing those gift cards to families in need. And so, I just thought that was a, that is a great example of a win-win. So, we raised the money, we helped the local restaurants, and then at the same time, we also distribute to families in need. I mean, that's, that's as good of a solution as we can come up with. So, I'm very thankful for, for Representative Wooton and his leadership, and, and, and again, another example of fantastic teamwork across the board. None of this happens in isolation. None of this happens, uh, by ourselves. This happens with people working together and coming together, and that's really been, um, the big focus of our, um, of our community over the last, the last six weeks, or five or six weeks. Uh, now, we'll say this finally. The, the phrase that I hear more and more of is, the term that people have really coined here is unprecedented. We've talked about unprecedented, and, but most of the time when we think of the phrase unprecedented, it's really about how the virus has changed our lives, the unprecedented times we live in, and those kinds of things. But I also like to think of unprecedented, though, in terms of how we have responded, about how we've worked together, and about how we are meeting the needs of our students and our families. A parent wrote to me today and said of his child's teacher, quote, "She has been so un, so unbelievably and unselfishly supportive", end quote. And I think that phrase sums up the work that's been done every day in Lexington One and by our amazing staff, and working with parents and connecting with people. So, unprecedented is, is very true, but, uh, I, it's, it's changed our lives, but it's also been an unprecedented response from our people, and about putting, again, we, we talked about putting children first, and all means all, and this has been an incredible example of how our staff, everybody, school nurses, guidance counselors, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, teachers, everybody, administrators. And, and I, and I always, and, and I hate to start listing people, because you're always going to forget somebody, but it's, it's really been this incredible group effort of coming together and, and really framing our response for COVID-nineteen. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Board members, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Little?
I'd like to add one here, but is, uh, we also need to give accolades to our food service and bus drivers for assisting Lexington Three.
Oh, yes.
During their, their problem, their, they've got, uh, their food services quarantined for fourteen days, and we've picked up the ball and run with it, and I think that's highly commendable.
I think, thank you for reminding me of that fact, absolutely.
Anybody else? Dr. Guyton, Ms. Garris? Okay. Um, at this time, board members in your packet, uh, ten point O are items for your information. Ten point one is a monthly general fund financial report. Ten point two is a monthly general fund budget transfer report. Ten point three is a monthly capital projects report. Ten point four is a monthly unauthorized, excuse me, procurements report. And, um, I would just like to close and say that we are praying for all the families around the world that have COVID, and, um, we are starting to see a little bit of glimmer of hope. I feel like we're flattening the curve, and, um, that we, as a board, are looking to the future, because we, we've got to keep moving forward, and we hope one day I'll be back together again, and side by side. So, we just appreciate everything everyone's doing to make that happen. We appreciate our medical community. And at this time, it is eleven point O, which is an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, please stand up, and we will see you at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.